Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our March 28th Joint Study Session of the Arcata City Council and the Arcata Planning Commission on Sea Level Rise. And I'm so glad that everybody is here. So as this is a special study session, we will take public comment at the beginning of the meeting only for items that are on the agenda. We would like to start the presentation part of our meeting no later than 6:30 to respect our panelists' time, so we will be limiting public comment to 25 minutes, or maybe a little more because we're getting started right on time here. So if you are interested in making public comments, just so I can kind of gauge how many people we have, please either, you know, rise yourself up to line up behind the podium here, or if you're on Zoom, please press star nine to raise your hand, or raise your hand on Zoom, or press star nine if you're coming in via phone and wish to make comments. So also, if you have a question that you hope that tonight's presenters will address, please include that in your public comment, and we will try to write down and take notes on those and incorporate them into the questions that we will be asking this evening. And so the purpose of tonight's meeting is to learn from our presenters on the current trends of sea level rise and how they're affecting our long-term planning. This is a general citywide discussion and not specifically on the Gateway topic. The Council and Planning Commission are here to learn and ask questions to our experts about decisions that we will make over the next many months. So if you are here in person and would like to make public comment, or at least just pose any of the questions that you might have this minute, we're going to have two minutes for public comment, so please line up behind the podium to make your comment.
The California Coastal Act, Chapter 3 Coastal Resources Planning and Management Policies, Article 8 Sea Level Rise, Section 30270, Considerations of the Effect of Sea Level Rise. The Commission shall take into account the effects of sea level rise in coastal resource planning and management policies and activities in order to identify, assess, and to the extent feasible, avoid and mitigate the adverse effects of sea level rise. This is like one of the most important things that we're going to be facing. Also under the Local Coastal Program Update Grant, this was a grant that the City of Arcata got, 4-1, 2019 to 1231, 2020. The city response was, in this grant, "The City of Arcata will develop a coastal zoning ordinance that reflects the new policy direction, including developing policies and programs to avoid building in areas affected by sea level rise in coastal zones." Also, the grand jury report that the city, in the city Arcata's council, council's response to the 2021, 2022 grand jury report to the sea also rises to Judge Hendricks, your response was finding nine, finding nine, "Arcata City Council also believes that the city's work to increase infill housing development outside the hazard zone is a critical component of the region's sea level and adaption's response." March 20th, 2023, New York Times, "Climate Change Is Speeding Towards Disaster. The Next Decade Is A Crucial," UN says, "Planet Says. Earth Is Likely To Cross Critical Threshold Of Global Warming Within The Next Decade." It says that "The global average temperatures will estimate to arise of 2.7 degrees Fahrenheit above pre-industrial levels and sometimes around the first half of the 2030s." As human conditions do-
Thank you. All right, our next speaker, please.
Thank you. I'm Lee Dodini, Bayside, and I wrote this letter to the commissioners about a couple of months ago, but I just want to, I felt it was important to say tonight. This is just a part of it. We, we have experienced king tides that raised the water level by nine feet above sea level. So for the king tide events in 2050, the floodwater level will be near or higher than 11 feet above sea level rise, sea level. In the near future, with insurance underwriters, will insurance underwriters ensure construction in low elevation sites, sites that are less than or equal to 10 feet elevation in Arcata? Can you confirm if the insurance underwriting is currently addressed in the housing element of the GPU and the Gateway Plan? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Joanne McGary, and I'm very, very pleased that this evening is happening, and so many of you in important positions of power in our community are here to listen to some experts locally. I don't want to go into specifics about all this because all the experts will talk about it, and Gregory alluded to the laws and the impact of sea level rise in our coastal zone worldwide. It's, the effects are being seen in the South Pacific and elsewhere before they're hitting our shores. But as I speak up often at these meetings, I would like to remind everyone to have vision, be visionaries, be leaders with long-term vision about the, the thriveability of our community that we're all living in. So hopefully you will listen hard to what these experts have to share with you and, and really consider what we want our community to be. I follow a lot out of the Columbia Climate School, some webcasts by my friend Andrew Revkin, who's a climate journalist, has been so for many years. And he does all these webcasts on many, many things, and he says now with the IPCC reports, we're going to need to really look not so much on what's actually happening in terms of climate change, but in our response to it, our response to it, the vulnerabilities, how we adapt, how we mitigate. But it's, it's now a matter of adapting to what's to come, not trying to turn, turn the corner, turn things around because there possibly is not that opportunity. So in terms of adaptation and vision, please, please listen hard to what these folks say, ask hard questions of them, and thank you so much for having this tonight.
Thank you, Joanne. All right, we will not be going back and forth, so is there any more in-person public comment? I did see some folks just walk in. All right, make your way to the podium. Thank you.
Hello to commissioners and council members and staff and all the panel members. Appreciate this. I'm actually a little off-script here, but it relates to just a little bit of the pace that's going on right now with the process. And so yesterday, the planning commissioners attempted to accelerate through the completion of the vision statement and land use element revisions on the general plan, doing so in more of like a lightning round approach to a work in progress. Miniature time limits gave way to some longer discussion. By the end of the session, they all questioned the insurmountable task of presenting the revision of the general plan element to Ben Noble by June 2023, who will then distill it into form-based codes. Ben Noble would then present a first draft in the form of form-based codes in July 2023 to the council. Sorry, just ran over here. I was at the March 1st, 2023 meeting at the city council. Councilmember Mathler, who clearly did request to stop form-based code community engagements and proceed with getting some examples of form-based codes so community members would have something tangible to digest. Her comments begin on the video at 1:29:33. I do applaud the commissioners for their breakneck pace, you know, and what they're trying to do and accomplish and move forward and get, get this out there because I asked for it, like probably back in January, just get some examples. I think it's important for people to see it. But I would remind them that I think it's a soft deadline and would encourage a community to continue meaningful discussion in the process. Thank you.
All right, keeping any more in-person public comment? All right, and just a reminder to our online commenters, as we move to online comment, this is comment on the special meeting, so about items on tonight's agenda, about sea level rise planning. Let's go to online public comment, unless there is none. All right, well then. Okay, well, that will take us on. I will turn it over to Director Loyah to introduce our panelists, and we will get started, and looking forward to what you all have to share with us.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm thrilled to have our panelists here tonight. And I'm actually going to let them introduce themselves because they will do a much better job, I'm sure, of describing to you their backgrounds and interests in the work that they've done than I will. We've got a couple of panelists who are online joining us via Zoom, and we will start with them, beginning with Gwen Shaughnessy.
Hi, everyone. David, am I all queued up?
You're queued up. We can hear you fine.
Okay, perfect. Well, hi, everyone. I'm Gwen Shaughnessy. I'm a Senior Climate Adaptation Specialist. I work with NOAA's Office for Coastal Management. I'm sorry, I can't be there in person. I'm actually located up in Portland, Oregon. And so it's, it's a pleasure and an honor to be here virtually with you all. Just a quick note, it's our mission to work with a variety of partners from all sectors, and our goal and, and kind of our bread and butter is to deliver the products, services, and programs most needed by the nation's coastal communities. It really helps to hear these kinds of decisions and challenges facing, facing our partners at the local level, so we can continually refine our data and products based on the needs that we're hearing. For our presentation, we'll actually be sharing a short recording by Doug Marcy. He's a coastal hazard specialist with our office. He's a member of the U.S. Sea Level Rise and Coastal Flood Hazard Scenarios and Tools Interagency Task Force, it's quite a mouthful, and a contributing author to the 2022 Sea Level Rise Technical Report. He's based on the East Coast, so he's unable to join given the time of day, but hopefully this recording is the next best thing. In it, he'll cover the key takeaways from the technical report to hopefully kick off the discussion for this evening. So David, whenever you're ready, you can go ahead and queue up the video.
Okay, great. Thanks, Gwen. And we'll go ahead and finish introductions and then jump into those. Kelsey, can you, can you tell us who you are and a little bit of your background, please?
Sure. Hi, everyone. I'm going to assume that you all can hear me. My name is Kelsey Ducklow, and I am our statewide coastal resilience coordinator at the California Coastal Commission. I've been here for almost 10 years now, working on sea level rise, including on our sea level rise guidance, and more recently on our local coastal program, LCP Grants Program. So I've been able to work on some of the work that Arcata has done as well, and really looking forward to this talk. Thanks.
All right. Thank you so much, Kelsey. Jeff?
My name's Jeff Anderson. I'm a principal engineer at Northern Hydrology and Engineering. Oh, okay. Sorry. Yeah, I'll start over. Jeff Anderson, I'm a local engineer, principal engineer at Northern Hydrology and Engineering. We focus a lot on restoration projects and hydrology and hydraulics. About a decade ago, I kind of got interested in sea level rise, and Alder Anai, it's been almost 10 years now, did the first vulnerability work in the bay. So thank you for inviting me here tonight.
My name's Alder Anleard. I'm an environmental planner, and I've been working on Humboldt Bay for the last 23 years. And in relationship to sea level rise, I really got started with that, developing a historical atlas for Humboldt Bay and the Eel River Delta, documenting how the shoreline has evolved over the last 150 years. And then in 2010, as Jeff mentioned, there was an opportunity to do one of the first sea level rise vulnerability assessment projects on Humboldt Bay, and that was to map the shoreline of the bay and determine how vulnerable it was to increasing water elevations. And since then, I've done probably maybe a dozen sea level rise vulnerability assessments for the county, City of Eureka, City of Arcata, Caltrans, and some other entities. And so at this point, I'm trying to actively retire, so that this may be one of my last presentations that I'll be doing. Thank you.
Well, we appreciate it deeply. Also note that both Jeff and Alder An worked on the city's sea level rise vulnerability assessments. Those links were provided to you in, in the packet. Okay, so Gwen, did you have anything else you wanted to say about the presentation before we queue it up?
No, sorry about that. I thought we were diving right in, so I think we're good to go.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so the 2022 Sea Level Rise Technical Report, and there's the URL for it, but you can Google, just NOAA Sea Level Rise Technical Report. It is a NOAA technical report, but it is, was produced by an interagency group, the Federal Interagency Sea Level Rise and Coastal Flood Hazard Scenario and Tools Task Force, which is a very long title, which we didn't even try to put an acronym to. And it is the contributed agencies FEMA, USGS, Corps of Engineers, NASA this time, and NOAA, EPA, and DoD, Department of Defense. It provides the most up-to-date sea level rise projections available. It's going to serve as key input into the fifth national climate assessment, as I mentioned, and it, it's going to hopefully inform sea level rise adaptation plans at all scales. The ways is that we've seen, you know, we're going to see in the next 30 years the same amount of sea level we've seen over the past 100 years. So we've seen definite increase. Obviously, there's going to be higher and lower rates in different regions, for various reasons we'll talk about. We're going to see more extreme tides, more impacting, high tides are going to start to impact us every day, almost every tide eventually, and we're going to see more and more damaging storm surges, and a profound shift in coastal flooding over the next 30 years. One thing that we talk about in the report is that, you know, emissions in the future still obviously matter, but we're looking at even beyond 2050, at least two additional feet by 2100 due to the current emissions. And then, of course, if we go to a sort of a higher emission scenario, we could have up to seven, so there's still a pretty big range there. There is more certainty in the next 30 years than there were before. We've got a narrowing of the scenarios in the first 30 years by 2050, but then it increases after that basically because of the high dependency on, on what happens with future emissions. And we also talk about how, how important observations are, water level observations and satellite altimetry observations, and how that will help us with future projections. The sea level rise projections incorporate a variety of processes, as I mentioned. We have future emissions involved, ice sheet loss, ocean warming, ocean circulation, vertical land motion, all kinds of components go together. And there's two, really, two types of uncertainty. We can kind of break it down. There's process uncertainty, which is sort of the natural processes going in. That's the things like the vertical land motion and, you know, the, the currents and that kind of dynamic. And then there's the emissions uncertainty. So those two factors really do play into the, sort of the, the uncertainty and how spread the curves get once you get out beyond 2050 and 2100 and even beyond that. And this report actually goes out 20, 2150. So the scientists account for this by developing many projections that kind of span, span the likelihood. So you have your likely range based on some probabilistic information, looking at different temperature, you know, whether we're going to have one degree warming, 1.5, 2, 2.5 in the future, and then develop some exceedance probabilities based on that, on how those projections intersect those probabilities. And the scenarios in this report are kind of a subset of these projections that represent kind of the range of plausible futures. So let's compare the 2017 report, and this was from NCA4, to the new ones. It's the same nomenclature, but in this case, the extreme scenario in a 2017 was dropped. We'll talk a little bit about that. The global scenarios for around 2100 stay the same, but you, the timing has changed. So there's a little bit less acceleration until after 2050, and then they start to accelerate. So you can see that the projections are a little bit, I mean, so the scenarios are a little bit lower by 2050 than before. And the new report provides a little greater understanding and, and more certainty within the next 30 years. You know, we have a pretty good handle on things with observational data. This is the data, right? It shows us historic record. We've seen this much change. There has, there is a little bit of a, of a curve starting to happen, nonlinearity, nonstationarity, and that continues as we extrapolate out to 2050. We're within, you know, like I said, probably about a foot globally with all, within all the projections, but then as you go out 2100, they, they fan out. And that's due, again, to the emission uncertainty and the low confidence processes such as how fast ice sheets are going to melt. So how would you use these? This is an example in Portland, Maine, and kind of the difference between the two and how, what the implications would be for planning. For instance, here at 2050, let's, you know, commit to managing at least a 1.5 feet, because that's sort of the higher range here, but just in case, let's prepare up to maybe three. Same thing with going out 2100, you know, let's commit somewhere from around 3.9 feet, but be prepared because we have, the uncertainty may be up to 8.8, just to make sure we're capturing that range and potentially between the 2017 and the 2022 report. Even though the extreme scenario has been removed, basically, basically because they don't think we're going to get there that high by 2100, eventually we will get that high going out 20, 2150 and beyond. Mixed news for local planners, that we have a better handle on the scenarios until 2050, so a little bit more certainty. The bad news is sea level has definitely accelerated over the past few decades. That's going to continue to happen. We may have a little bit more time to plan for the highest levels because the 20, the, the extreme, the 2.5 globally may not happen. It sounds like it won't happen until after 2100, but we're looking at least two feet, two to seven feet by 2100. And this increase in sea level is basically going to change the tidal flooding regime, and we're going to see a lot more flooding. So we can't really wait anymore. So looking at considering risk tolerance, you know, the idea here is, it hasn't changed. We're advising folks to use higher scenarios because of where they have, where they're risk averse, and they know that a little buying higher provides extra protection. And so not only are you developing to handle sea level rise, but it will help you also handle storm surge and precip. We know cost is a factor. We know elevating buildings and, and whatnot, extra foot is, is hard and it's more expensive, but we also know that more investment upfront on mitigation practices can save you money in the long run for losses. And perhaps knowing a little bit more by what, a little more certainty by 2050, what's going to happen, that we'd be able to not overbuild by then for things like wetlands restoration. We may not need to go as high or plan for as high a sea level rise in that short, shorter timeframe.
All right. Gwen, do you have anything to add?
No, I think that's, that's good for now. I think we'll get into it once we get into the round robin panel part.
Okay, great. Thank you. Kelsey, do you have anything you want to tee up before your presentation?
Nothing to tee up. I can start talking with, once the PowerPoint is up. I guess as you're bringing it up, I'll just, I'll just note that, you know, I can, planning on giving just a quick overview of some of our sea level rise topics. And then again, like Gwen was just saying, getting into a little bit more detail as we get into some of the question and answer period. So really just trying to provide a quick foundation for how the Coastal Commission is addressing sea level rise. And you can hit the next slide. So one of the key kind of pieces I slide. So, one of the key kind of pieces I wanted to start with is the Coastal Act basis for how we address sea level rise. As I think you're all aware, the Coastal Commission is charged with implementing the California Coastal Act, and some of the key policies of that act that relate to sea level rise, starting with Policy 30253, which, among other details, essentially says that new development should be cited so that it can be safe over its anticipated lifetime. So, that would be taking into consideration all these kind of coastal hazards that we've already been dealing with, flooding, erosion, and so on, but now also considering sea level rise over that lifetime as well. If you go to the next slide. The next policy is Policy 30235, which allows for shoreline protection in certain limited circumstances. This can include coastal dependent uses for public beaches, or for existing, which the Coastal Commission has up to this point taken to be pre-Coastal Act structures, which I think is, well, we can talk about that if there are questions. But essentially, I want to point out, you know, the Coastal Commission's approach at this point is to make sure that development can be cited, so it can be safe over its lifetime without having to require any sort of armoring and/or other protective strategies in the future. Next slide. In 2021, the Coastal Act was amended to require the Commission to take sea level rise into account in its resource planning and management policies, and really thinking about those different impacts associated with sea level rise, and how can those be mitigated or avoided. So, those kind of, those three policies in combination, I like to think of as sort of, you know, these are policies related to making sure development is safe moving forward, and how we can make sure development that's already out there can be adapted to be safe. But if you go to the next slide, we also know that there are many other policies of the Coastal Act that relate to ensuring coastal resources are protected, really protected, enhanced, and restored. And these include things like wetland areas, special habitats, special species, priority land uses, things like ports and harbors and commercial fishing facilities, access and recreation along the coast and to the coast, agricultural resources. All of those kinds of resources need to be protected under the Coastal Act. And just as sea level rise is going to make addressing hazards, and ensuring development can be safe, all more challenging, so too will the protection of these resources be more challenging with sea level rise. And in part, that's because there are, there are conflicts between the uses and the needs of these different resources. And so, when you're starting to think about adaptation strategies, different adaptation strategies are going to be useful for different kinds of resources, and may have other variable impacts on other kinds of resources. So, that is kind of the overarching structure of how we're addressing sea level rise, these, making sure development is safe and making sure resources are protected, and then figuring out sort of the right balance of those approaches when there are conflicts in between. But if you go to the next slide, what does that actually kind of mean on the ground? There's, we have been working over the past number of years to provide additional guidance on what that actually means for, you know, permitting development, updating local coastal programs, and that sort of thing. In 2015, the Coastal Commission adopted our sea level rise policy guidance, and it was updated in 2018 to reflect newer science at the time. This guidance, we talk about it as sort of implementing overarching statewide guidance, which comes from the governor, comes from the Ocean Protection Council's state sea level rise guidance, and a variety of other kind of overarching informational resources like that, and then provides additional specific context for how the Coastal Commission approaches things. So, really providing more information on what implementing that statewide overarching guidance looks like at a permit level, or an LCP level, or other types of Coastal Commission planning processes. So, we really talk about how that's sort of implementing the statewide guidance, including things like using best available science and taking a precautionary approach, prioritizing natural adaptation options, phased adaptation, and so on. One of the key things out of that, though, is that use of best available science. You can go to the next slide. So, in 2018, the Ocean Protection Council came out with their updated state sea level rise guidance, which at that time included newer sea level rise projections, and that's currently reflected in our sea level rise guidance from the Coastal Commission. As you just heard Doug and Gwen mention, the NOAA report has, is providing newer science as of 2022. So, the Ocean Protection Council is currently in the process of updating that statewide guidance, and then, and we are working with them on that process. And then we'll likely have additional guidance in the future. But kind of putting that aside, I do want to just sort of talk a little bit about what the projections are right now, and how we've been approaching those projections. You can see here a table for the North Spit Sea Level Rise projections, and it's highlighting these three projection scenarios that Ocean Protection Council has recommended, and that we recommend using in different contexts, which I'll touch on in just a second. And you can just see that there is kind of low, medium, high, or low, medium, high, and extreme, and that provides projections for each decade up to 2150. If you go to the next slide. So, those three kind of columns that you saw there were these different projection scenarios, a low-risk aversion scenario, medium-high-risk aversion scenario, and extreme-risk aversion scenario. And these include recommendation, these are recommended for use in different contexts. Essentially, you know, where we're more concerned, where there's a higher amount of risk, more likelihood of damage or impacts to the environment, or to public health, that's where, you know, things like critical infrastructure, highways, wastewater treatment plants, and so on, those are the ones that we want to be most precautionary with. So, those were recommended for using those extreme H++ scenarios. Medium-high risk aversion, we think about for some great amount of consequences, but maybe a higher ability to adapt. That is for kind of most of our residential, commercial structures. And then that low-risk aversion scenario, high ability to adapt, low risk of consequences are for kind of incidental development, smaller temporary development, those kind of things. And so, the point I just want to, you know, the nomenclature and the specific amounts of sea level rise might change in the next few months as newer guidance comes out, but this overall approach, I feel like I'm echoing some right now, I'm watching this, just me.
You're doing good.
Okay. Yeah, just so, I think the overall approach is reflective of what you just heard from our friends at NOAA, of just making sure we understand what are, what is most likely, what is less likely, but would have higher consequences. And, you know, those different scenarios can be used to address planning and design as well. Next slide. I think key in that discussion is understanding that there is this difference between planning and designing for a specific amount of sea level rise. So, even if we're, you know, we want to see what is the worst-case scenario for this different type of development, what could happen, but that doesn't necessarily mean we need to design to try and avoid that amount. If it's easy to avoid that amount, great, it's always going to be better and safer to try and avoid that. In other cases, it's not possible. And so, finding that right design amount, but understanding if there's going to need to be different phased approaches or adaptation pathways to make up that kind of difference, if the worst-case scenarios come to pass, is really important. And next slide, I just have kind of two slides left, and I just sort of wanted to touch on just that there's obviously a lot of ongoing sea level rise planning work. One of the big areas of that work is with our LCP grant program. We have given out approximately $16.5 million to date. We've been excited to be able to give some of that money to the City of Arcata, has done some really great work, as we'll be talking about here. And we still have about $14 million more for grants to continue adaptation planning, continue LCP updates. But really, it's been really important for us to help local governments update these local coastal programs, which many are out of date, and therefore are not able to address these kind of growing concerns of sea level rise as much as they should. So, we're really excited to be able to provide that money to Arcata and to other communities up and down the coast. And really, I think it's a good resource for learning a lot of what's going on around the state, and how different folks are approaching these issues. Next slide. Just this final slide to note, you know, there's a lot of other guidance out there, a lot of ongoing work. We have our critical infrastructure guidance, which was adopted in November of 2021, provides some more focused discussion of what it means for critical infrastructure, sea level rise, adaptation planning, why those considerations might be different from residential structures and those kinds of things. We're working with the State Lands Commission to understand public trust interests, and how that will change with sea level rise, to make sure we can continue to provide protection of those public trust resources. This, can you see that post in the middle? Those are draft guiding principles that we are working on right now, which will be coming forward to the Commission in May. And then, on the right, I know it's hard to see, but I did want to point out, we have a lot of ongoing work with our local government Sea Level Rise Working Group, which includes representatives from the Commission, the CSACs, and the League of Cities, to really try and hone in on some focused strategies for how we can all work with local governments, and the Commission, and other stakeholders to actually get some of these LCP updates certified, because we know that has been a challenge for any number of reasons. But really, a lot of, you know, all of this work, I think, kind of feeds into and off of each other as we all work to address these problems. So, it's really exciting time, and we're excited to continue to work with you and the rest of the state on, on these adaptation approaches and LCP updates. And I think I will leave it there.
All right. Thank you, Kelsey. Okay, Jeff is going to take us away next.
All right. So, I'm going to kind of change gears a little bit here and get into a little more of a technical presentation. I'm trying to make this, I think it's really important to understand some of the sea level rise processes and how they occur in the bay, because it does affect, and it will affect, these projections, or the scenarios that we heard about. So, let's hope I do this right. Next one, please. Okay, so I'm just going to jump into this. Regional mean sea level is the change of global mean sea level caused by regional and local factors. Okay? So, one thing I didn't include on this slide is that both regional mean sea level and global mean sea level does not consider vertical land motion. Okay? And that'll become important here in the next few slides. It just accounts for the change in volume of the oceans. All right? So, our kind of local science group, we've been using a long-term regional mean sea level rise rate for the Pacific Northwest of about 2 millimeters per year. And this is slightly higher than the global mean sea level rise for the same period, which is about 1.7 millimeters per year. And what I've been, what I've done here is I've taken some local data, and I've combined it with some literature values, and I've kind of over time created this long-term, that's what this black dots in line represent, this long-term trend, in what I feel is a pretty good representation of what long-term regional mean sea level has happened, kind of off of our coastal oceans. It's probably good for Northern California up into Oregon and Washington. And...
I'm sorry to do this, but Peter's having trouble reading these. And I wonder, Christian, would you switch with him, and he can look at that monitor right in front of him?
Sure.
Do you mind switching with Christian? And you can, you can read the monitor. I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah. No worries. So am I, actually. If it wasn't still light in here, they'd, they'd show up a lot better. All right. So, as I was saying, before Peter needed to move, this, this black data is sort of a recreation of using local data and data I've been able to get out of the literature. And I think it's a pretty good representation of kind of a long-term regional mean sea level for our area. And it's pretty consistent over from about 1930s through today, 2022, of about 2 millimeters per year. What I've done is I've taken the NOAA sea level rise scenarios that Doug introduced, and I've removed vertical land, their estimate of vertical land motion from those, and then now I've attached those to this regional mean sea level curve. So, what this gives us is a, is kind of a historical curve of what regional mean sea level could look like, and then how these projections that they are, scenarios they were talking about is attached to that. Yeah, bounce that, David, please. Okay. So, well, let's talk about relative sea level rise. And I'm going to jump around here a little bit, but relative sea level rise is what a tide gauge measures. Okay? So, if you look on NOAA's website, and you're looking at a tide gauge record like this, it's measuring relative sea level. What relative sea level is, is it's the change in regional mean sea level relative to the land. Okay? And from a planning and engineering and design perspective, that's the sea level rise rate that we want to use. Okay? And it includes the effects of vertical land motion. And so, depending on the direction or rate of vertical land motion, relative sea level rise can either be positive, or it can be negative. So, this is a, I downloaded this yesterday. This is the regional rate from North Spit. And remember, I said our, sorry, our relative rate. Remember, I said our regional rate is about 2 millimeters per year long-term. So, what this is telling us is the relative rate is much higher than that regional rate. So, basically, what that's telling us is the vertical land motion below North Spit, below the tide gauge, is actually going down. It's actually going down faster than the regional sea level rise rate, that long-term rate. So, it's additive. So, that's why we get this increase of close to 4.8, 4.9 millimeters per year for North Spit. Ironically, the opposite occurs for Crescent City, which, as we all know, isn't that far north from here. Crescent City actually has a negative sea level rise rate. And what's happening is the, the ground is actually rising below their tide gauge faster than sea level's coming up. So, the ground is actually emerging above the ocean, and it's creating a negative sea level rise rate. Okay? All right. Next slide, please. All right. So, I got to give a call out. There's been a, a local group of us, mostly geologists, but I've been lucky enough to kind of work with them. For almost 10 years now, we've been looking at, mostly around Humboldt Bay, how land level changes are affecting relative sea level rise. And as I said, this work's been going on for well over a decade. And in January, thanks to Jay Patton, we actually got our first publication of all this work done. And so, if anybody's interested in what this talks about, I'm just going to kind of go over the title stuff, if this is available. This is a free one. You don't have to pay for this. You can go and download this document. But what, what we've been looking at is how relative sea level rise and vertical land motion change in Humboldt Bay. All right? So, this, this red box is outlining, kind of, so we, we look at that, but it's giving us a relative sea level rise rate here, and then our best estimate of what vertical land motion is to there. So, what we noticed right away is, starting up here in Trinidad, we have a rate of right around 3, 3 millimeters per year relative sea level rise rate. And as you start to move south, and you head towards Hooked and Slough, North Spit and Hooked and Slough, the rate goes up pretty drastically. At North Spit, it gets above 5 millimeters per year, and at Hooked and Slough, it's already above 6 millimeters per year. And these differences are due to different rates of vertical land motion. And so, what we're, what, and we've, we've looked at this both from tide gauge analysis and from land level surveys, historical land level surveys. And this data tends to be pretty consistent between the different sources. And so, once again, I'm going to just kind of point out, you know, Arcata, kind of consider Arcata kind of the north part of the bay, and, you know, that might be a kind of Mad River Slough area. So, we're looking at a relative rate there, let's just say 3 millimeters per year. So, we have a vertical land motion rate of about half a millimeter per year. You go to the middle of the bay, North Spit, we're over 5 millimeters per year, vertical land motion about 3. And then, obviously, in the south side of the bay, we've got a much higher rate in vertical land motion of about, you know, over 4.5 millimeters per year. So, what we're seeing too, is just think about this, is that relative sea level rise in the south bay is twice of what we're seeing on the north side of the bay right now. Okay? And that's caused by vertical land motion, because regional sea level is the same. Okay? Next slide, David, please. All right. So, what does that mean for the sea level rise scenarios? And I'll try to make, I'll, I'll do my best to explain this. So, the, the black line... So the, the black line here at the bottom, and I know this is hard to see, that's the intermediate sea level rise scenario from NOAA. And I, and we're starting out in year 2000. And by adding our different vertical land motion rates to it, we can make this sea level rise scenario kind of relative to different locations in the bay. All right? So the green line, which is just slightly above the regional, or that sea level rise scenario, could represent North Bay, for example. The blue line, which we use in the Norsebit vertical land motion, is that, that, that represents sort of an intermediate sea level rise rate for the middle of the bay. And the red line could represent what's going on with that intermediate scenario in the South Bay. And what, you know, it, it's a pretty drastic change across the bay. And so, for example, if we were planning to the year 2100 and we were looking at this intermediate rate, for example, if you're going and you're looking at Norsebit, you would be, you know, we'd be looking at something around 1.2 or 4, 4 feet of sea level rise by 2100. But around the north part of the bay, that could actually be almost a foot lower for the same timeframe. Okay? And obviously, in your, if you're in the south side part of the bay, well, sorry, it's, you're actually, things are rising quite a bit higher. So you can see vertical land motion for the same sea level rise scenario creates different water levels across the bay. All right? We can also look at this in terms of how vertical land motion changes the timing of sea level rise. All right? So this plot down here is just kind of a zoom in between about 20, I don't know, what is it, 2030 to 2080? And this is just an example. But if we, let's just assume, once again, this intermediate scenario, and we were looking at, we just wanted to plan for something around half a meter sea level rise, or about a foot and a half sea level rise. What we see is that we would hit that sea level rise rate in about 2055 in South Bay. Right? We would hit that in about 2061 at Norsebit, and we would get to that same relative sea level rise rate about 2075 in the north part of the bay. Okay? So almost a 20-year difference for the same water level, just across the bay, because of vertical land motion. All right, next slide, please. All right. Want me to keep going? Two more? Okay. Humboldt Bay is not a bathtub. All right? And a lot of the sea level rise viewers that are available, that we can see, you know, you can go on NOAA's website and look at viewers, they, they make an assumption that Norsebit, for example, that's what we typically use, because that's where the data comes from, is that water levels in Norsebit, which is down here, is, they just project it out horizontally, flat over the bay. Okay? FEMA did this in their last flood updates. All right? And I'm, what I want to say right now, unequivocally, is that Humboldt Bay is not a bathtub. This is a simulation that I did for one of the models I have working of the bay, where we looked at kind of a representation of a 100-year coastal flood. And these are kind of maximum water levels over this, this, this tidal series that we used. And what we're showing is blue colors, kind of the cool colors, they represent lower water surface elevations. And the warmer colors, kind of reds and oranges, represent higher. And right away, you can actually see that around Norsebit, it tends to be cool, so it's, it's lower. And as you start creeping up your way towards Arcata, we actually see that sea level rise elevations for the same event actually get quite a bit higher. All right? And this is for a 10-year event. It's just the colors aren't quite as dramatic, so I like to talk about this one. All right, next slide, please. And this is the last one. So what does that mean when we're planning for sea level rise? The curve, the curve on the left is, is kind of a, it's flood frequency curve. On the, on the Y-axis is what would be extreme water levels. And on the X-axis are just return intervals. So for example, this is 100-year water level, and you could go up and see what the elevation is. The red curve is for Norsebit. The black curve is for the Arcata Wharf, so just off Clop Lake. And you can see that water, you know, extreme water levels tend to be quite a bit higher than they are at Norsebit. And what does that mean, for example, if we were going to be planning or designing something in Arcata? So let's say we're using the FEMA flood maps, okay? They have a still water level of about 10 feet for 100-year water level baywide. So let's just say you're using 10 feet to design something in Arcata. What we're actually doing, because of this, the dynamics of the bay, you'd actually be designing something that's more on the order of about 10 to 25-year flood event. All right? And so what we would really want to be doing if we're designing for a 100-year event is to design for something like 10-point, this is approximately what I would say our current 100-year water level is, is about 10.7. So almost half a foot difference between Norsebit and Arcata for the 100-year event. And somebody may say, hey, you know, it's only half a foot for flood levels. But I want to point out is that, and this is kind of unique to our area, but a two-year coastal flood, which has a 50% chance of happening, which is also pretty equivalent to, we heard somebody mention king tides, and they, they get close to nine feet, that's also pretty representative of what an average king tide would be. You know, in Norsebit, it's about nine feet, like somebody said, but up here in Arcata, it's closer to 9.4 feet. But the important thing is the difference between a king tide and a 100-year event is only a little bit greater than a foot. It's 1.3 feet. So it's not a big range between a two-year king, kind of average king tide and the 100-year event. And so if you're off by half a foot, one way or the other, it can actually be a big, it can actually, you know, create a, it can actually be a bit problematic, actually. And so this is, you know, to kind of put this in summary, even for planning, I think it's important that we consider these details. And we drill down into this. And, you know, I talked about the difference between the vertical land motion on the scenarios, which could be upwards of a foot or more difference, you know, and also with this bathtub versus Alhaw water actually moves around in the bay up to, you know, if these are additive, we could be looking at differences of close to a foot and a half. And, which is about half a meter, which is the difference that these different scenarios are actually doing. So, once again, I just think it's important that we do get into the details a little bit here when we're talking even about planning.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. Alderone, do you want to use the laser pointer also?
Yeah. Wait, you sit. What's that? Oh, okay. Yes. I just wanted to start off and to highlight that David had Jeff and I help him with doing sea level rise vulnerability assessment work in 2018. And so I produced this report in 2018. It's a good reference document if you want to take the time to look at it and read it. So I would recommend that, I know that David's made it available to you. Next slide. So I, I'm going to take a little different approach than the other panelists. I think it's important for you to understand the historical context of what makes Humboldt Bay unique and our situation unique. This is a, a map overlaid on Google Earth, and it shows you the extent of the salt marsh habitat on Humboldt Bay as it was in 1870. So essentially, the salt marsh was about 40% of the bay's footprint in 1870. And you go to the next slide. And that's the footprint of today's bay. And you can see the yellow line, that's where the shoreline was in 1870. The blue area is where it is today. Essentially, 90% of the salt marsh was removed, starting in 1890. So we have a much smaller bay than what it was naturally occurring. And you go to the next slide. And with three feet of sea level rise, essentially, the bay reclaims the 40% that was taken away from it, starting back in 1890. Those salt marsh areas that were around the bay, those lands are mostly now pasture, and much of them are behind earthen dikes. The ground surface is actually lower than it was when it was a salt marsh over 100 years ago. And so if the water overtops those dikes or breaches those dikes, those areas flood again. So with just three feet of sea level rise, we see the bay reclaim its historic footprint, and then it starts to encroach on new lands that wasn't part of the bay historically. The next slide. Something that happened that was, you know, I think a, a good thing in a way for planning is that we had an extreme water event on New Year's 2005. We had the highest water level recorded at the Norsebit tide gauge, and the governor declared a state of disaster on Humboldt Bay as a result of it. The water got to 9.6 feet. And all around the bay, the dikes were being overtopped and Highway 101 was being flooded. And so it, you know, I use that as a base level now, a baseline. So if you go to the next slide. If we look at our tidal datums, our, our average king tide and our, our average maximal monthly tide and our average daily high tide, if we want to use that as a baseline, that extreme event that ended up being a state of disaster, then with one foot of sea level rise, our average king tide will exceed that state of disaster water elevation. With two feet of sea level rise, our monthly high tide will exceed that disaster water elevation. And with just three feet of sea level rise, the daily high tide will be higher than what was declared as the state of disaster on Humboldt Bay. And I think what this highlights is, is that with very little water elevation change, a lot of things are going to happen on Humboldt Bay. And I think it's important to realize that we need to load our response upfront and not be looking at the next century, but looking over the period of time that we could experience three feet. Next slide. And the other thing that's unique, I think, on Humboldt Bay is, starting in the 1890s, there was a movement to dike off all of the salt marsh, essentially to build an earthen berm at the boundary of the salt marsh and the mud flat with a floating dredge. And after a couple of winters of rain, the salt was washed out of the soil, and all of a sudden, now you had flat agricultural land with no redwood slopes. And so there was about 10,000 acres of agricultural lands that were created rather quickly. So if we go to the next slide. There's about 41 miles of dikes that were constructed that keep the daily salt water from inundating those former tidelands. And in some areas, those dikes are not being maintained very well, and they have breached. And when they breach, the area that used to be part of the bay is flooded right away on the very same day that the high tide occurs. Next slide. And for example, here's the, the daily high tide footprint in the Eureka Slough area, the area in blue. If the dikes, and there's dikes all along Eureka Slough's shoreline margin, if the, any of those dikes are breached or overtopped, if you go to the next slide, this is where the tide water would be the very next day. And we're not talking about sea level rise. We're talking about a historical legacy that began in the 1890s by diking off the bay's salt marsh. Those lands would become part of the bay if it wasn't for those dike structures. So if the dike structures are compromised, we would get a lot of flooding instantly with that. Next slide. And what we found by doing, creating a shoreline profile, elevation profile of the dike areas, is that a lot of the dikes are about less than, just a little bit less than 10 feet. And then there's quite a bit of miles that were at 11 feet. And what we saw is that there's a tipping point or an over, overtopping point, that when the water elevation rises to the 10-foot contour, it starts overtopping the dikes. And by the time it gets to 11-feet contour, we've overtopped more than half of all of the dikes on Humboldt Bay. And so we're not looking at a lot of water increase in elevation to see the problem that these historic dikes have left us with. And next slide. And so if we look at that tipping point between 10 and 11-foot contour, with one foot of sea level rise, our king tides are going to reach that tipping point. With two feet of sea level rise, the monthly high tides cross that boundary between 10 and 11 feet. And with three feet, the daily high tides would cross that. And so that dike landscape is really vulnerable upfront with just the beginnings of sea level rise that we will see. Next slide. And I just wanted to point this, the, the state has issued a state agency sea level rise action plan for California. And they recommended that the state agencies look at 3 and 1/2 feet by 2050 in their planning for sea level rise, and look at 6 feet per 2100. And I think this reinforces, you know, the vulnerability that we have on Humboldt Bay with just three feet of sea level rise by 2060. Next slide. And so if we focus in on, on city of Arcata, the area in gold is the, what was mapped in 1870, that's all the salt marsh area. So those lands are the most vulnerable lands on Humboldt Bay now, because they're behind dikes. They're vulnerable to emerging groundwater, and they're vulnerable to just a little bit of sea level rise, you know, half a meter, 1 and 1/2 feet to 2 feet. And we overtopped the existing dikes, and that's the area that would be flooded in Arcata. Next slide. And so if we look at a half a meter of sea level rise, you can see most of that former salt marsh gets reclaimed with just half a meter of sea level rise. If we jump up to 1 meter, the, the area that's inundated expands a little bit, but not greatly, above what we get with just half a meter. There's a little bit of encroachment in the urban area. But most of the change we're going to seize right upfront with, you know, 1 and 1/2 to 2 feet of sea level rise, most of the former salt marsh is going to be reclaimed by the bay. If you go to the next slide. So what did we locate in those areas on that former salt marsh? We put critical infrastructure. We have municipal water lines. We have wastewater sewer lines. We have natural gas lines, electrical transmission towers. We, and our transportation infrastructure, we have Highway 101. We have Highway 255. We have local streets, all built on those former salt marsh areas. All of that infrastructure is at risk if the bay compromises the present-day shoreline and floods those areas. Next one. So we have mapped out where the infrastructure is, and you can see the former tidelands on the east side or in the bayside area. We have natural gas lines. We have municipal water lines, electrical transmission towers. And then around the south G Street, we have some other infrastructure areas. One thing to point out with the infrastructure is, is that the city doesn't have anything to do with our energy infrastructure. PG&E owns that. And so in same way with our transportation, our state transportation infrastructure, that's Caltrans, that's not the cities. But that critical infrastructure was located in really vulnerable areas. Next one. And this is the transportation, the upper corridor of Highway 101. Go to the next one, please. In the former tidelands, the salt marsh areas, those are what are referred to as public trust lands. And the, when the coastal act was formed, the state decided that public trust lands would be retained in the state's jurisdiction and not subject to the local coastal program. All the area that you see in the crosshatched area, all the former salt marsh, all of that is subject to coastal commission review and approval for any projects that would be developed. And just outside of that area, there's a little bit that's in the city of Arcata under its jurisdiction. Next one, David? And so we've looked at half a meter and 1 meter, and we saw a slow expansion. If we look at 2 meters, which could occur by the end of the century, we start to see a little expansion into the urban area of Arcata. We don't see a huge expansion in the footprint. The water gets deeper, but it's not really migrating. If you go to the next slide. But when we look at 3 meters, which is the projection for 2120, all of a sudden, we crossed a threshold in the area that's vulnerable to sea level rise inundation. There's a big jump into the urban sector of Arcata, and the rest of the areas would become deeper. But really, for sea level rise planning, we need to focus on what would happen upfront with 1, 2, and 3 feet of sea level rise. And then when we get to the point of 2 meters going on to 3 meters, that's the second big threshold that we need to plan for. And again, next one. And people have asked about the Gateway Plan. So using Jeff's inundation maps that he produced from his hydrodynamic model, the area in blue is, could be inundated by 1 meter. The area in red would, could be inundated with 2 meters of sea level rise. And the Gateway Plan area is, is not really directly inundated by 1 or 2 meters of sea level rise. We don't have a model that shows you what the groundwater is doing in response to sea level rise, at least not yet. One's coming this year supposedly. But when we look at 3 meters of sea level rise, a good portion of the Gateway Plan area would be subject to being tidally inundated with 3 meters of sea level rise. And I'd like to focus on, when working with Jeff, starting, you know, 10, 15 years ago, that was really beneficial for me, because he did all of the engineering. And I just asked the simple question is, what areas would be flooded at what water elevation? And so he modeled and mapped all of that. So if I wanted to see what area would be inundated by half a meter of sea level rise, he has the maps for that. And then what I did is I really a meter of sea level rise, he has the maps for that. And then what I did is I really just inventoried, what did we build out there? What do we have in that area? What would be vulnerable and at risk? And so my sea level rise vulnerability assessments are really an inventory document of what is located in the areas that Jeff's engineering has identified would be underwater at different water levels. And what I've not gotten involved with is trying to, you know, unravel or, you know, project the sea level rise projections. When are we going to reach one meter? It could be 2060, it could be 2080, 2100. But what we do know is what's at risk with just three feet of sea level rise? And I think it's important to know what is at risk so we can start planning on how to mitigate. And knowing what areas are vulnerable to three feet of sea level rise, hopefully we won't build anything that's critical in that area that would be at risk if it was built. So, last slide. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, all of the panelists. Really appreciate the time and effort you put into the presentations and sharing your wisdom with us. We are a little behind the outline in the staff report. We do have the next section, which is intended to provide an opportunity for a panel round robin to address the questions that were identified in ahead of the meeting. And so I think we'll run through those. I had eight prepared and did not think we were going to have time to get through all eight. I just wanted to make sure we had enough time to fill the time allotted for it. So I'll go ahead and start with these. And if there are specific questions that the panelists feel like it's important for you to answer, you know, please identify those. We will then reserve the balance of the time for the council and the commission to ask you follow-up questions and to address the information that you provided for them tonight. So I'll go ahead and start and we'll do round robin in the same order, starting with Gwen, moving to Kelsey, Jeff, and then Alderan. So for the first question, if you could tell us, this question came from a planning commissioner that says, "It seems like the projections for sea level rise keep getting worse and new projections land beyond worst case for previous projections. Given this, how do we assess the various projections? How far into the future are the projections reasonably accurate?" And as maybe a tag on to that, because I saw a couple of different projections presented tonight, if you can kind of tease apart the differences, in particular Jeff and Alderan, between sort of the projections that you showed and your answers, that'd be great. So Gwen, do you mind kicking us off?
Sure. I'll just say that I know it can be frustrating, you know, seeing multiple reports come out year after year with new projections and not really understanding what goes into those. And so I'll just maybe comment about some of the inputs to these different scenarios and projections and understanding why they're constantly refined over time. And so the first thing I'll say is that, you know, we're getting better and better at our observations and using different technologies like satellite altimetry and just basically understanding the surface of the ocean. So I think that's one. I think there's a ton of research being done. I think our ability to model these different scenarios is getting better and better. And our understanding of the different processes, and I think Doug hit on this during the recorded presentation that he gave. And I think as we continue to understand the processes that contribute to the projections in both the near term and also long term, our refinements on making those projections globally and then taking those global projections and applying them locally in some of the work that I think, you know, Jeff had mentioned, gets better and better. And so I just wanted to say that out of the gates. I think if we look at the comparison between the 2017 and the 2022 technical reports, in the near term, it's actually gotten a little better. The projections have decreased. Our confidence in the 2050 numbers and projections have gotten better. And you can see that if you were to compare a side-by-side, which you don't have, but the spans, so if you think about those curves that everybody's been showing and as time goes on, they fan out, where they start fanning out is further into the future. And so if we think about 2050, it's kind of collapsed a little. It's that spans between the different projections has gotten closer. And that's just a representative of our confidence getting better. I think in terms of long term, that is where we start seeing some of the unknowns come into play. In particular, things like emissions scenarios. What are we as humans going to actually do in terms of globally curbing emissions to make an impact? And then how do those impacts on emissions translate into the cascading processes? And so, thinking about the impacts, especially on what we're calling these low confidence processes. So things that are impacting, you know, ice sheets, both Antarctic and Greenland ice sheets, I think that there's a lot of uncertainty still wrapped up into that. And that's why you see that bigger fan the further we go out. And so I don't know if that's helpful at all. I want to reserve time for other panelists, but hopefully that'll at least kick things off.
Thanks, Gwen. Kelsey?
Yeah, I think there are a couple of ways to take this answer. One of the first things I want to say is this is kind of one of the reasons that we have tended to be, you know, take this precautionary approach in considering and our analysis, those higher-end and sometimes extreme scenarios, is to directly address kind of that issue. We don't, you know, we don't want to be undercounting or underanalyzing the amounts of sea level rise, because what if it is worse? So that's one piece of it. I think from a planning kind of vulnerability assessment for an overall area, one thing that we have been recommending is analysis of multiple amounts of sea level rise. So we're kind of looking at these different ranges, best-case scenario all the way up to worst-case scenario. And then, you know, if you've analyzed kind of a one-foot, three-foot, five-foot, whatever, as projections change, that maybe just changes the timeline associated with when we might see those amounts of sea level rise, or if some of those higher-end ones even come to pass. So, you know, that kind of builds in that sort of, you know, change as science changes, we can kind of understand what is likely to happen and when would it be most likely to happen. From a specific development, like design standard, I think that's, again, kind of speaks to that point that I sort of made during the presentation of, you know, looking at those worst-case scenarios. And then if you don't design to those worst-case scenarios, which is, you know, most, not as common, I think we're often designing to lesser amounts than those extreme amounts. But building in that understanding of what we need to do for this specific development if some of these worst-case scenarios do come to pass or these higher amounts of scenarios. At the commission, a lot of times that takes the form of risk disclosures, deed restrictions, those kinds of things that would require removal or other types of adaptation strategies in the future. So that's kind of the area we want to see is, you know, what would it take if something, you know, worse were to come to pass? And so just sort of starting to build in that planning consideration and understanding what that would mean is how we kind of address that uncertainty.
I think Gwen did a pretty good job at answering this question. I think I'll just kind of mirror a couple of things she said, is that we have a lot more confidence in the near term, 2050, 2060, of what these projections are going to telling us. As you go into the future, there's just the uncertainties, we just get a lot of uncertainties. We don't understand the processes, we don't understand what might drive, you know, big ice sheet collapse yet. And right now, from, you know, my read on the NOAA report is that we don't feel the processes active today and into the near term are going to be what drive those large ice melt and those large regional, those kind of larger sea level rise projections by the end of the century.
I don't have anything to add.
Great, thanks. Maybe we'll start with you, Alderan, then, so that the next question kicks into the, some of the comments that were differences between the way that the OPCC right now is evaluating and the coastal commission is using the H++ scenario, and then what the NOAA report has now come out and recommended, you know, dropping the extreme risk aversion scenario for planning purposes. And so if you could just kick us off and tell us, you know, your thoughts on that and, you know, how we should be planning for that.
Like just my thoughts are that the moderate to extreme risk aversion projections are dire enough that I don't need the H++ ,you know, to be motivated to do planning. You know, I really think that, you know, the, you know, three meters, 10 feet by 2120, you know, there's a lot to plan for there. So dropping the H++ doesn't really, is not that significant to me.
Yeah, I'm going to pass on this one because I'm kind of curious what Gwen says.
Okay, I'll take a stab at it and then, yeah, we'll see if there's any follow-up. So, yeah, I think we've mentioned this a couple of times. I think as we, as we refine our understanding of processes, that gets reflected in the scenarios that basically are represented in the technical report. And I think that the big difference between and growth opportunity that we had during the spans, the five-year spans between 2017 and 2022, is that there was a lot of research being done specifically around Greenland and Antarctic ice sheets and the dynamics there and trying to understand the processes that were happening there. I think there, while there are some refinements in our understanding there, I think there's still scientific discussion and investigation underway for the potential for this rapid ice sheet melt or collapse. And I think that there's just not consensus right now on if that will occur. And if it does occur, what that process will look like and what the implications for that process are. So that being said, I think taking all of that into account, our better understanding of what we're seeing and observing and researching now, coupled with kind of that greater unknown, it led the modelers to the conclusion that basically the probability that we would get to that extreme level was so low that it didn't merit inclusion. And I want to add a little asterisk there because it's 22100. And so I think there's been some talk around this, but I want to make this point very clear. Sea level rise doesn't end at 2100 and it will continue. And so I think the thing to take away from this is that while it's not recommended for planning purposes out to 2100, if you look further beyond 2100, we will eventually get to those levels. And so I think it comes back to, you know, the question of what are we planning for? What time horizons are we looking at? What is it that we're making decisions about? And have that inform, quote-unquote, the number. And so I hope that that's helpful. I know there was a lot of confusion about why it was dropped. And so I appreciate that this question has surfaced. I don't know if Kelsey wants to jump in and add anything to that.
Yeah, just really quickly, just to like provide one key kind of detail on top of that. I do think it's going to be important for making decisions for these big pieces of critical infrastructure that have big consequences, involve a lot of costs, and which will be around beyond 2100. That's certainly not everything. That's not every single house or residential or commercial structure. But for those bigger pieces of infrastructure, you know, we do know some of those are going to be around beyond 2100. So I think that's the piece where we are most, where we'd still kind of want to understand those worst-case scenarios. I don't think that's altogether too, too different from how we've been approaching that H++ over the past five years. Certainly there's room for misunderstandings, you know, always with that kind of detail. But I think that is the real piece that I still want to make sure that we're thinking about is those extreme scenarios for critical infrastructure over the very long term.
And Kelsey, you'd alluded to this a little bit in your discussion of the way that the science is being updated through the OPCC and your work with them. Is the coastal commission then looking to update the science that they're using and drop the H++ scenario and still use some form of extreme aversion scenario?
I am not sure exactly how it's going to go with OPC. We're working with them in integrating the new NOAA report. So I don't want to, I don't want to speak out of turn, but I think there's a good likelihood that it'll be kind of not really something that we're thinking of for, you know, the near term, obviously, or through kind of 2100. But for that longer term, beyond 2100, I think it's still going to be something we at least want to understand. I don't know exactly what that number will be or what that looks like. But it is kind of, you know, as Gwen was saying, it is still a possibility for beyond 2100. And that's, those are the places where we'd want to understand that scenario.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I do want to try and get us back on track for the timing. I want to respect our panelists' time that they've committed to us. And I want to preserve time for the commissioners and the council members to be able to ask their questions. So I'm going to skip down, and actually I think I'm going to ask sort of the softball question to transition us into the things that are most important for the decision-makers to ask. So anything is still fair game that's on this list, or if there's something else that is of interest to the commissioners and council members that's not on the list, please feel free to ask those when we transition. But I'm going to jump to question number seven, which is, "Of the various scenarios, which is the most appropriate for planning purposes? Please let us know why and how does this change for different use types, residential, commercial, critical infrastructure?" I feel like you've addressed this to some extent, but I'd just love to hear responses from each of you on your perspectives. Why don't we start locally here? Jeff, do you have a response to that?
I'm not quite sure how to respond to that one. I, because of the uncertainty, it's hard to attach even a scenario to one of these. Okay? And, you know, I think for planning, as we've heard, I think it's important that we do consider kind of this long-term effect. But the NOAA document, I think, did a really good job. And there's a lot of new literature out there that we really should be focusing our planning efforts on what we kind of know now, which is much shorter horizons, you know, planning kind of like what we used to plan to for the next 20, 30, 40 years, 2060, 2070. Always keeping in mind that into the future, you know, there's a lot of uncertainty. There's also uncertainty that we could start to make changes globally and we don't see those big extremes. That seems rarer and rarer every day, but that is a possibility. I think picking a scenario is going to depend on what you're trying to do, the assets, what are some of the questions, and the development. You know, obviously, residential and commercial structures, today there's vulnerabilities. There are structures that are flooding today, right? And people are adapting and we're going to adapt into the future. We don't have a choice, right? And, you know, we're trying to, I've talked to David about this, but we're trying to plan to the year 2100, which is like two or three generations away. I don't know what my great-great-grandkids are going to be thinking, you know, our, we might have a whole different perspective of society of what these extremes mean, right? We might not even have cars in eight years. Beam Me Up Scotty could have a whole different meaning. So I think, well, I could keep going on this, but if I had to pick a scenario for the near term, I'd say the one-meter scenario. Okay? And if you were going to, wanted to kind of think about critical infrastructure and what might be, then start looking at the 1.5 or maybe the two-meter sea level rise scenario. Okay, but I think the one-meter for at least short-term planning, 2060, 2070, is probably a pretty reasonable. And as we heard, there's not a big difference between all five of them by the time you get 2050, 2070 anyways. All right.
I think the state's guidance, you know, from last year, of looking at a meter for 2050 and looking at two meters for 2100 is a good beginning, you know? If you look at local examples, there's two residential developments in King Salmon that wanted to build brand-new homes. And the coastal commission required them to determine what was the extreme water elevation 100 years out and whatever the what was the extreme water elevation 100 years out, and whatever that elevation was, I think, was 18 to 19 feet. That was the minimum floor level for the habitable part of the structure. And so those two residents that were built on Bonner Drive, they had to figure out 100 years from now, what's the water elevation gonna be, and they had to live above it. So if the Coastal Commission is using that as a standard on state-retained jurisdiction areas, then I think we need to look 100 years out. What is gonna be the extreme water elevation to the best of our ability with the science that we have now? So that's what I would say.
All right, thank you. Gwen?
Yeah, so, I mean, this one's tricky from, obviously, a federal perspective, because this is a local planning decision, and so I think it's a little more complicated, as you've probably heard from both Alderaan and Jeff, that picking the number is hard, right? And tying yourself to a particular scenario can be challenging. I think I might take a little different perspective and share that, and it was one of the public members that spoke before about being visionary. I didn't catch her name. And I would just root you all to think about that as well, right? And so thinking about what your, obviously, local and state policies and requirements are is key, but also thinking about your community priorities and your values and what it is that you want to be as a community, and have that influence some of your decisions as well. I think that that comes into play when, you know, we're talking about, you know, what's your risk tolerance or your aversion to risk, I think is the commission phrases it, and thinking about, you know, does that change depending on different land use types? And, you know, I always like to think about, you know, if we look at what potential flooding scenarios are and how that changes with different scenarios, what does that tell us? What changes within those changes, if, for lack of better words, right? So if we change scenarios between, you know, the intermediate and intermediate high, what else is impacted? And what does that mean for your community? Is, are there things that, like, you know, we can live with that? Or as a community, are we gonna look at that and be like, no, that's gonna change our day-to-day life too much? It's gonna, you know, change our access to things that we value, recreation opportunities, being able to get to work, whatever that is for your community, that being able to flush the toilet, if we're talking about the wastewater treatment plant, right? Like, so realistic day-to-day things could be impacted here. And so, you know, it's an interesting planning exercise to look at, you know, if I map out and try to understand, quote-unquote, what gets wet under one scenario, how does that change under different scenarios? And what can we live with? What are we gonna be able to tolerate? And I think Kelsey said a really important thing earlier, which was, you know, what if we get it wrong? Like, can we live with those consequences? And whether that's wrong in the sense that we planned above what actually happens, like, can we live with the over-investment? Or if we under-planned, can we live with the consequences of water, basically? So I just, I wanted to add maybe a little different perspective and not answer the question, but answer the question, because I can't tell you the scenario or the number, unfortunately. That's a very local decision to make.
Great, thank you, Gwen. Kelsey?
Yeah, I guess I don't really have too much to add that I haven't really already touched on. I don't exactly know, like I said, how the updated state guidance is going to change with the new science. My guess is that there's still gonna be this kind of similar framework of recommendations that kind of considers different risk aversion scenarios for different types of development. And that, you know, just kind of retouching on that, I do think that where we have these bigger risks associated with damage or under considering sea-level rise, those are where we wanna be the most precautionary and use the higher amounts of sea-level rise, the higher sea-level rise projections, where it doesn't matter as much, you know, we can design to lower. I do, you know, I think it is important to point out again, though, that these are not standards for design. Different areas, different types of development, there's gonna be a bunch of different contexts for how these decisions are made, balancing all kinds of different resource needs. So, you know, I don't think there is a single easy answer to what is the right amount, you know, unfortunate as that may be. One of the things that I think is great about the NOAA report is the increased confidence we have over those kind of smaller or nearer-term sea-level-rise amounts, so I think that gives us kind of a good direction to go with kind of the priorities for adaptation for what's kind of out there right now, what we know is gonna be at risk in the next 20, 30 years. Those are good priorities for adaptation to make sure we can really address those vulnerabilities. And to the point that Alderaan made earlier, you know, there is this tipping point for the Arcata and Humboldt Bay area around that 1-meter of sea-level rise. So I think that is, that's a really important number to have a better sense of, you know, what are those vulnerabilities for that amount of sea-level rise? So, you know, it's not an easy answer, but, you know, we always fall back on, well, let's consider a worst-case scenario and kind of work back from there for what makes sense for different types of development in different areas.
Great, thank you. And I'd like to turn this item-
Can I add something to that?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I had one more thought here with this, and as you probably heard from all four of us, it's really hard to talk about picking a scenario and talking about risk. Something that we don't always do, and it's something that I kinda wanna throw out there, is this idea of bringing a little more design and engineering into the planning process, okay? So think about, you know, I remember Doby telling me one time, "I know how high I can raise the berms around the oxidation ponds without impacting either capacity, without having to add material to either the bay or into one of the treatment cells." He knew how high he could go, okay? And with that information, I could tell you a lot about what scenarios are going to do what to that infrastructure, okay? I can say, hey, with a meter of sea-level rise, this is what's gonna happen, okay? And I don't, I think we could do the same thing when we talk about residential, commercial, and critical. What is feasible? I mean, you know, most, I would say that most engineers that probably work in public works know what's kind of reasonably feasible in an area. We know how much fill is probably okay to add and how much we wanna invest in building up roads. So if we brought that information forward a little bit more in these planning processes, then I think we can tell a better story with these scenarios and avoid some of this risk, because it's the risk part about it is what's really difficult.
Yeah, thank you for that. I think that's been the city of Arcata's sort of underpinning for its sea-level-rise strategies to date and currently trying to weave in a little bit more of these adaptation pathways that, you know, people are talking about now. Love to turn the meeting over to our mayor for this next part to have questions of the council and commission.
Okay, I was gonna check in. We were slated to have a quick five-minute break if folks need that, want that, nope? Okay, we're ready to keep going then. Okay, so I'll turn it over to both council and commission to ask any questions or anything off this list that wasn't covered. Be respectful of one another. Give everybody the time to talk that wants to talk. I'll do the teacher thing, and I see Scott raising his hand, so let's get going.
Thank you. I had a quick question for Jeff regarding your presentation. One question I had was, you said that the vertical land movement is lower in the North Bay than it is further south, and yet, in the mapping for the 100-year flood event, it shows higher water levels in the North Bay than at the Spit, and I was wondering how those two pieces of information correlate?
Okay, so for the modeling, all the modeling I've done, I don't consider vertical land motion. It's just too complicated, and we don't understand it other than these few spots up and down the bay. And we, you know, and there's uncertainty in those vertical land motion estimates. It's not like we know that was exactly. So my approach has been to kind of hold the base static when we model it, and then we get these levels, whether we're doing sea-level, sea-level-rise scenarios or extremes, and then we can, kind of as I showed, you know, with the vertical land motion, we can back into different levels and timeframes. I think that's how I've been approaching, approaching not doing that.
So I guess to piggyback on Scott's question, and I hear what you're saying about the vertical land motion, but I've got the jitters because of all this moving and shaking. We just had another small earthquake yesterday, and so I guess my question is, how much does seismic activity, the big one coming, is gonna affect the vertical land motion? And how is that? Yes, that's the question.
Now we need one of the geologists from that list I talked to. I will be, I'm gonna, I'm gonna answer this, but I'm caveating on it, that this is like I'm an armchair geologist, okay? It's like, I read a book or something, right? But the, my understanding is that the vertical land motion's going down, so when the big one happens, it's gonna bounce up, okay? Just like Crescent City is going up, when the big one happens, it's gonna go down. And they've documented this in other areas. They've looked at this with, in Alaska, they've been able to actually see historical levels. And so, in fact, I asked Jay Patton this question like two weeks ago, you know, are we going to, when the big one happens, do we expect the ground to come up? And that's sort of my understanding is, that's probably might be what happens. Not like Japan, where they actually, when they had their big one, they actually had coast subsidence. Actually saw areas of the land go down that were already subsiding.
Okay, I wanted to ask a question that kind of goes off of question number three from these prepared questions, which was about taking into consideration dykes and levees, but kind of asking on that further. So looking, especially at the models that you had Alderaan, just looking at how, if those dykes are overrun, that water will rush and move into the salt marsh areas? I mean, how does the Coastal Commission, and this might be more of a question for our Coastal Commission person, but policy work with protecting those because they are not natural adaptations? And so what kind of would the policy and planning be on protecting or working with existing dykes, or is that not recommended by the Coastal Commission? Or how would protecting those dykes perhaps change those kind of vulnerable areas?
I'll defer to Kelsey in a moment, but I can just relay my experience of working on restoration projects around Humboldt Bay on dyke lands. And we have not been able to raise the elevation of dykes because it generally expands the footprint of the dyke, which is a fill of a coastal wetland, and that's not an allowed thing to do. And armoring an unarmored dyke is something, again, you're putting in imported fill in a coastal wetland, and that's not something we've been able to do. So we have looked at relocating dykes inland and giving up some land, but it's already wetland, so we're not really creating new wetlands. We're just changing the type of wetlands. But I would defer to Kelsey as to what the Coastal Commission's policy is on dykes.
Yeah, I mean, without getting into too many specifics, because everything is kind of context-specific, um, yeah, I mean, continued use of dykes and levees or armoring of those levees or expanding levees is generally not allowed, in the same way that, like I was saying, kind of, you know, shoreline protection, armoring is really only allowed in certain contexts. And part of that reason is just kind of as sea levels rise, you know, you've changed the natural shoreline from something that could have migrated inland and resulted in continued wetland, upland habitat, to something that's now gonna get squeezed and drowned out. So that, those are some of the impacts we're trying to address. That being said, obviously, these dykes and levees are protecting a lot of infrastructure, a lot of pre-coastal stuff, a lot of public access features, all kinds of things. So, you know, I think we are contemplating how to move forward with that. The county is contemplating how to move forward with that. You all are contemplating how to move forward with that. I do think there, you know, like I was kind of touching on, there are gonna need to be some compromises in terms of what are the different resource needs that we're balancing? What makes sense? How can we try and find an appropriate balance between maybe, as Alderaan just kind of said, moving some dykes and levees inland or changing that kind of existing shoreline? But where are we gonna need to continue using those dykes and levees or potentially building them up or potentially other kinds of adaptation strategies like natural or, sorry, living shorelines, those kinds of things, eco-levees? So, you know, I think it's hard to say in kind of any specific area, but those are the kind of policy implications that we are all grappling with.
I think it's important to, when you're talking about dykes, to realize that it's preventing tide water from flooding a low-lying area that used to be part of the bay. And so the dyke prevents the area from being flooded by the water overtopping the dyke. It doesn't do anything about emerging groundwater. I mean, we could spend millions of dollars on rebuilding dykes as high as you want to build them, and as sea-level rise goes up, it pushes groundwater up with it. And we could have freshwater wetlands and open water behind the dykes, and the dykes haven't breached. And so whatever you have behind the dyke, probably by the time we have a meter of sea-level rise, you'll have standing water. It won't be agricultural land.
Thank you. Okay, any, yeah?
Since you have mentioned emerging groundwater, over the coming year, we're gonna be asked to make decisions about land use and land use controls for areas both south of Samoa on South GNH Street and immediately north of Samoa in the Gateway Area, which seems to be sort of a magical barrier at the moment. Is anyone actually doing those analyses of emerging groundwater now? And what kinds of results will we need to look at in order to make those land use policy decisions within the next year that we're being asked to make?
Yeah, I'll take a crack at this one. So as part of the Cosmos project that the USGS is doing, they have, they do have kind of a statewide groundwater model that is looking at how groundwater may, how groundwater's increasing with sea-level rise, kind of, that is a pretty coarse resolution, and I don't, I think right now it's a good starting place, and it does show emergence of groundwater over time. One of the things that we need to think about is sea, groundwater as it approaches the coast tends to track mean sea level, okay? And maybe a little bit higher if you've got big waves, like it might start to track mean-high water. And so when we're, remember, when we're looking at a lot of these inundation maps that we were looking at, that's not mean sea level, okay? Those were extreme events, those were, and so I think, you know, it's, I think we could probably make some reasonable assessments, just understanding the ground elevation that you're interested in. You could always pop a well in and see what the groundwater level is right then and now, and then it's probably pretty well gonna be correlated. If sea level comes up, the groundwater's gonna come up. And if we can find the funding, I know quite a few folks that would be really interested locally of looking at a much, you know, higher-resolution groundwater model for this area. Oh, go ahead.
Associated with USGS's Cosmos program is a groundwater modeling research that's being done. It's called the Tale of Two Bays, and they selected Santa Monica Bay to develop a groundwater model, and I was able to get them to select Humboldt Bay as the other. And so for the last two years, they've been generating a groundwater model specific to Humboldt Bay, and they're honing in on how groundwater might respond in, say, the King Salmon Fields Landing area, and then how would it respond on Dyke former tidelands on the Wildlife Refuge? Last year, we held two workshops where they presented what they were hoping to do, and the latest report I got from them is that they're hoping by September, they will actually release their groundwater modeling results for Humboldt Bay. And so I don't know if that fits in your timeframe. I hope that that happens. They keep running into delays, but somebody is modeling it.
Will you repeat the name of the group or the program that's doing that modeling again?
It's a NOAA-funded, the Ecological Effects of Sea Level Rise Program, and it's being done by two researchers that were associated with the Cosmos program, Kevin Beavis and Michelle Given, I think it is, are doing the research.
Gwen or Shauna, I'm sorry, Gwen or Kelsey, did you have input on either of those?
Not really, just to reiterate that Cosmos- Not really, just to reiterate that Cosmos and USGS, and then the project that Alder on mentioned are kind of the only ones that I know of right now, but that, yes, it is a kind of big question for this area. And right now, the kind of statewide Cosmos stuff, which is not as site-specific or detail-oriented, I don't think it would surprise you to look at that information and kind of get a sense that where the, all the dike former tidelands are where you're gonna experience some of these groundwater impacts first. But yeah, it'll be, it'll be good to have that more detailed information if that project finishes up in the near term.
Great, thank you. And then as a follow-up to that, you know, are there strategies to manage groundwater? You know, if it is emerging, you know, in a, you know, an ag field, you know, that's acceptable level of risk, but if it's emerging in, you know, your, you know, your streets, and that's not acceptable level of risk, are there ways to engineer to, to manage groundwater? You can raise the ground. Don't get into pumping. Now, that's, that's the immediate response, is to just pump down groundwater, and, and I don't think we're gonna be able to afford that. There might be some drainage improvements that can be done, but the, you know, as you get into low-lying areas, the, it's not that you can't get things to drain, it's that that has to drain to the bay, so if the bay's coming up, it just sort of start, you know, you get this counter kind of action where you might get your, you might set up something that will actually drain, and it just can't because sea level's too high. So, once again, it's, I think there are actions, but it, it's, I just think it's things that you have to study and understand.
Okay, I'm gonna go for it, please bear with me, and this was a lot of information from some very learned people, and so I hope this is not like a stupid question, I'm still kind of trying to absorb all of this. I guess this will, kind of along the thread that David just mentioned, and a common thread that I've heard everybody talk about, was risk tolerance, you know, and, and what you said, Jeff, about, you know, we don't know what things are gonna look like in 60 to 100 years, so are there scenarios that, you know, with new technology and new builders and, you know, building things, you know, higher off the ground, I mean, is that a feasible scenario?
I'll give you a simple answer, yes. Yeah. They, they do it in other places, right? And so I, yeah, we, we can do the, the same things here.
Where are, I mean, are there some other places that you know that, that we can kind of look at, or?
Well, if you're gonna build in a flood zone now, we, we, you, you're, you know, FEMA has developed manuals of how to build in a flood zone, you know, what you do to your foundations. The East Coast is dealing with this because they get hurricanes, right? So they have all these different approaches for dealing with, you know, luckily, we don't get hurricanes, so, you know, but there, but there are approaches to, for, to do this.
And we are, I mean, I, I don't think that any developer is gonna want to build on something that's gonna, you know, collapse, so.
True. But once again, you know, engineers, I mean, there's geotechnical engineers that, that contend to, you know, reasonably come up with a solution to build just about, in, in any type of soil condition, almost. I mean, there's some that, you know, we should, we shouldn't, and we don't. But, yeah, I think that there's, there's, there's solutions to, a lot of innovative ways to address this, okay? And that's what I think really we need to do, is start to get creative in how we're gonna address this, because it's not one size fits all. It's, it's gonna be something different, it has to be.
So if I may, I wanted to jump in, sorry, Kelsey, if you wanted to go first. I just wanted to add on to Jeff's comment and say, you know, as you're going down this path of thinking about how to live with water, how to develop differently, how to build differently, engineering, construction, I, I just want to emphasize the need for systems-level thinking, and not thinking about necessarily discrete assets or discrete pieces of infrastructure, and looking at them divorced from how they relate to the, the broader community, how people access those particular things. So thinking about connective roadways, you know, it's, it's a broader thing than just, I wanna build a house here, can I do it and still meet the requirements that the coastal commission puts out, and, you know, can, can still accommodate a reasonable amount, a reasonable amount of sea level rise? And so just, you know, wanted to, to plant that seed that in some instances, it, it does make sense to look at, you know, a particular asset. Again, I go back to the wastewater treatment plant, but even with that example, you wanna think about, you know, can employees get to or reasonably access the wastewater treatment plant to run it, to operate it, to service it? And so really thinking about how your community is connected and, and serves as a kind of a network. And so, not to overcomplicate things, but I just wanted to encourage you all to think about that as well, instead of just kind of this discrete asset-by-asset approach, which I think can sometimes be really attractive to do, because it's easier to think about something simply, and, and how communities work is not simple. So, anyway, Kelsey, I'll, I'll defer to you, I know you came off mute too, sorry.
That's actually almost exactly what I was gonna say, you know, we can elevate some of these structures, but what does it mean if your house is safe, but your roadway, or even your kind of stormwater system is not and is completely overwhelmed? So it was great to do that. I will also just add, though, you know, as, as we're thinking about that kind of system approach, also considering the public access, recreation, natural resources pieces as well, you know, there may be examples of areas where it doesn't make sense to continue development, and those areas can instead then be used as flood storage because the natural habitat has been restored there, or they can be public access features that we are giving up elsewhere to protect, you know, development in some, some cases. So trying to think about that balanced approach, you know, what is the vision for the community overall, what are the values we wanna be able to support now and in the future? And then also just recognizing that it's not gonna be a one-and-done kind of adaptation approach, that we're gonna have to be changing over time to make sure we can address and protect those different values over time.
I would just wanna point out that there's a lot of Arcata that is not in a vulnerable area for inundation, for sea level rise for the next century, you know? And those people are still gonna be affected by sea level rise. They're dependent on being able to flush the toilets. You know, if the system isn't working, even though they don't live in a low-lying area, they're gonna be affected. And really, when you look at how critical all the different assets are in our region, probably one of the most critical infrastructure is Highway 101, you know? And if the dikes down on South Bay are breached, 101 would be underwater with, you know, our, our current tide elevations, and we all use 101. And so it's not in the city of Arcata. Some of the areas that are most vulnerable to sea level rise aren't in Arcata. King Salmon is probably the most vulnerable community on the bay, you know? And so I think that we can't just look at the areas that are gonna be flooded in what's there necessarily, there's people that live in areas that aren't gonna be flooded, that are dependent on certain critical infrastructure. And whoever's in charge of that infrastructure really needs to take that task seriously, because it's a much broader population than what lives in a vulnerable area.
Thank you. Stacy, I believe you had a question?
I do. So question number eight talks about the city's current adaptation strategy, and so I'd love feedback on that, but for those people that don't have the questions in front of them, I feel like I should read it out loud, so it's a long one, bear with me. So the city's current adaptation strategy considers a range of environmental, fiscal, and social factors. Retreat will be provided in areas that have low risk, lower investment assets such as grazed, low-lying lands that do not have a significant impact on the community. Areas such as South G Street, which has significant public and private investments, a concentration of lower-income households, high rates of homeownership, dozens of businesses, and high-value community assets such as the Marsh Wildlife Sanctuary, will be prioritized for adaptation designed to preserve these areas as long as it is cost feasible. These areas would receive priority for living shorelines, new levees, and stormwater management systems designed to buffer tidal flooding impacts. So thoughts on this strategy?
I can take a start. You know, I think this is certainly something we've been talking about with you all, our district staff up there in Arcata, and kind of talking about this approach as well. I don't wanna get too far into the specifics of exactly what makes sense and what will be approvable with the commission, but I do wanna, you know, I think this is, this does fit in with kind of the approaches I've been alluding to already tonight of, you know, there are different resource conflicts and different resource needs, and we've, you know, been taking a little bit of a newer approach for the commission of trying to understand, you know, how can we strike that right balance, even if it's maybe not how we would've done it in the past, but, you know, we, we have to have clear eyes about what is realistic and what is workable, and how do we, how do we get there over the short-term, medium-term, long-term? So, you know, I think, I think that, you know, that whole long paragraph does speak to some of the things that I was alluding to of, you know, we might be protecting some areas in ways that by the letter of the Coastal Act aren't necessarily what we would, we would do, but are balanced out by, you know, making sure we're protecting other resources elsewhere. We've been kind of talking about this as a neighborhood-scale approach statewide, so it is, it is new, I think it is gonna be challenging for the commission, and there's probably going to be disagreements on exactly what is that right balance. But our, for our now-former executive director and current executive director is carrying on this as well, of just, you know, really wanting to work with these local, locally specific contexts and try and figure out what does make sense, and, you know, move us all forward so we can have some successful adaptation, and, you know, figure out, figure out what makes sense in each of these areas, so we can protect these things and really move forward with these priorities.
I didn't wanna dominate it, but I, I guess from my perspective, the city can't do this alone. The city can't develop a strategy to respond to sea level rise by itself. It needs to partner with PG&E, I mean, all of our energy infrastructure is outside the city's, you know, ability to change. Needs to partner with Caltrans, we're all dependent on that Highway 101 without it. And when you look at the amount of state-retained jurisdictional lands on Humboldt Bay, not just in Arcata, you know, the coastal commission has to partner with the city, you know, to do this. The county has received a grant from the coastal commission to actually start developing a regional sea level rise adaptation plan for Humboldt Bay. And I think that the city will be a key player in that regional planning effort, you know, and I think that maybe combining all of our resources on Humboldt Bay that come up with a strategy that is baywide, we might be a lot more effective than thinking the city can resolve this problem by itself. I don't think so.
I don't know that much about the city's adaptation strategy. I wanna applaud you for actually having one. But from what I read from this paragraph, I would say it seems like a reasonable start. I mean, I'm, you know, hearing what Alder on says, there, there are other things to consider here, but it, it seems like focusing on, like you said, the South G Street area because of existing community, and identifying areas where you could have retreat seems to make sense to me.
And I'll just, I'll round things out and echo, I think, what other panelists have said, I, I think, I, I am also unfamiliar with the plan and the strategy, but it, it appears that there has been considerable thought that went into it, so I'll comment on that and applaud you on that. I think what I'll add to this is, is twofold. One is something that I, again, I think we've talked about and talked around throughout the evening, but maybe just adding an exclamation point on it, and that is that one thing to consider is the non-stationarity of, of these strategies, and recognizing that even if we take steps now to implement different interventions and responses, that they come with an expiration date, and that because we have a strategy, it's a great start, but it should be a living document, it should be a living thing, and I know that's, that's a challenge with staff turnover, with election cycles, and changing priorities, but I think it's really important to, to recognize that, something that David mentioned earlier, you know, this, this idea of adaptation pathways, and, and I won't get into the specifics, other than to say, one thing I would encourage you to think about in this strategy is how to incorporate those signposts to look out for, and recognize how things are changing, and getting you kind of pointed in a trajectory where you may need to adopt a different strategy. And I think having enough time to plan and make those decisions is really critical, and often underappreciated in planning cycles. And so really trying to do diligence in terms of looking for, you know, like I said, what, what are those signals and signposts that, that might indicate that things are changing, that we may need to change from one scenario to another, because things are accelerating of that nature? And so I, I just wanted to, to add that kind of time component as well to this, and then just mention something else in that, you know, I just, I'm really encouraged by the fact that you all are having these conversations, and having these conversations now, I think is very timely. This is a very ripe moment for these kinds of decisions. I think there's a lot of opportunities with state and federal funding, I won't steal Kelsey's thunder, but, you know, thinking about the resources that are out there and, and coming out, out there for planning and also implementing actions. And, and I'm talking a significant, you know, potential game-changing amount of, of resources. And so just being on the lookout for those kinds of, of opportunities, and I think Alder on's mention of this regional strategy and, and regional plan lends itself to, to those big moments, and seeking, you know, funding, especially at the federal level. And so, you know, as much as I'm able to, to be a point of contact, or, you know, our office being a point of contact for those federal opportunities, I just wanted to, to mention that, because I do think it's important, it's very timely right now, so.
Any more questions from the council and/or commission?
I have one.
Go ahead.
So, speaking to expiration dates and being ready to pivot to Plan B, kind of feel like it's the elephant in the room, everybody's been talking about the wastewater treatment plant, and what that expiration date is, and when we need to think about where are we gonna put it? Or if we do need to do so? And what about decentralizing it? Some other ways to think about that? Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know the, an easy answer to that one. I think you probably wanna protect it and use it as long as you can, and, and, but be plan, you know, like we're hearing, you know, be, be prepared for Plan B. You know, one of the things that's talked in the NOAA document is there are, and Gwen brought it up a little bit, but, but there are these thresholds that we can start to observe down the road of when, when that may, you know, when, when it's time to start seriously thinking about pivoting. And just remember that, you know, I've worked on some restoration projects and some wastewater projects, and the planning process can take 10 to 20 years to move. So, you know, you gotta bring that into consideration too, and, you know, with, with something big is moving the treatment plant, you know? But I don't think there's a really simple answer there about what that date could be.
I'm not an engineer, so I will not get involved with that, but one of the things that I've run into on other areas of the bay is people are concerned about inflow, saltwater inflow into sewer lines, and that saltwater getting to the treatment plant, and it disrupts, you know, the, the process, the decomposition process. And so it's not just just the wastewater treatment plant, but all the sewer lines that feed it, they need to be protected from saltwater intrusion. And I don't know if Arcata has lift stations, but Eureka has a number of sewer lift stations that are in vulnerable locations, you know, that would be flooded during coastal flood hazard areas. So I think that you need to broaden it out a little bit and certainly the wastewater treatment plant, but also all the transmission lines that are in flood hazard areas that feed it need to be, I don't know if the proper term is hardened, but to prevent saltwater intrusion into the lines or to affect lift stations.
Jeff, I don't know if you know the answer to this, but we're, we're saying to plan for about a meter by 2050 and two meters by 2100. What do you think the level that this sewer treatment plant could last to?
Yeah, I, I don't know. I, I'm not sure I can give you that answer right here.
Has anyone tried to figure that out?
I'm not sure if, if, I mean, in terms of just protection with the levees going up, I think there is some, some stuff there. But I want to, I just want to add that, you know, what we have to think about over short-term periods with the treatment plant, even if the berms come up, is wave overtopping. So when we get a big event and we get waves, we get splash over. Okay. And it would be, it would be a really fun exercise to understand how high you guys are thinking about protection and then what that could look like in time. So if, if we get some sort of a storm event where we have waves that are overtopping and putting saltwater and, and it's a natural based system, so it's going to be able to take some saltwater. It's just not going to break right away. And I think that's part of the equation. I mean, you know, it's a great optimization problem, Peter, right? We can look at, we can look at elevating assets, doing what we can do, and how long can the treatment plant, after we do that, handle these kind of natural wave events and these extreme events before it just doesn't work anymore? Before it, and that's what I see the problem with the Arcata system is it's just going to get inundated with saltwater from oxidation ponds and not function like it currently is.
Okay, our city engineer is, is ready to tackle this one too, just to add in some extra info.
Not to tackle the whole thing, but to answer Peter's question, the elevations around the levee right now is, lowest elevation is around 12 feet and then more, 90% of the levee is in the range of 12.5 to 13 feet. So the table you saw earlier, the number was, in 2050, the number was projected to be 12.8 on your table? Yeah, approximately. So, yeah, so we are protected. The current levee elevation is protecting our wastewater plant at least till 2050, the elevations.
Thanks.
So what does that mean for saltwater intrusion into the systems and the efficacy for, you know, biological breakdown and so forth?
Well, to our knowledge, we have not seen saltwater intrusion in our oxidation pond or on our sewer system.
Sounds like it was built good with some good clay back in the day.
Well, it's in the bay, so it has a clay, yes.
Okay, other questions?
Sorry, I have one more.
Don't be sorry.
Okay.
Now is the time to ask the question. So let's ask them.
Jane Woodward had asked a question. It was item number six. It says the, the State Agency for Sea Level Rise Action Plan for California issued in February 2022 indicates that the coastal jurisdictions should plan for 3.5 feet of sea level rise by 2050. And then, you know, it goes on. I'm not even thinking about 2100 right now. I just wondering, you know, she, when I reached this a little or spoke of it a little bit earlier about seismic activity could possibly double the rate of that sea level rise. And so I'm wondering, does that conversely, so if it's doubling, we're talking, does it work the other direction? So if we split the difference between today and 2050, which is 27 years, it'll be like in 14 years, we could possibly have 3.5 feet of sea level rise if we had that huge seismic activity. And then I would really love, if we have time before we close, thank you for that great link for the NOAA. It was an interactive, if you haven't had a chance to check it out, maybe we can tonight. There's a slider and you can see exactly what's going to be inundated, who's going to be underwater at, you know, what meters. So was there a question in there? Yeah. What happens if we do have that big event that could double what we're expecting in 2050 could conversely happen as early as, you know, I mean, I don't know.
I'm not sure I understand the question. So is it, if we have an earthquake event? Well, if we have a big earthquake event and the ground goes up, we just gained some ground, right? Until it starts to sink again, which it, you know, it's taken hundreds of years to get us to where we're at. But that's a, that's a tough one because we don't know, you know. I think we're going to have so many more problems to worry about if we have the big event than sea level rise at that particular moment.
You have a big event. You could ask Lori Dingler how she feels about a big event and she's going to be talking about that and she has real concerns about it. And we're going to be pretty devastated if we have a big event and it's going to be everywhere and it's going to be all over the county.
Yeah. And plus we'll get a tsunami, right? So.
There's some real sea level rise right there. Yeah. What if?
And remember all that vertical ann motion I talked about? You know, we're loading the spring right now, right? The spring's getting loaded. So it's just, it's going to happen. We just don't know when.
So I have a question. Is the consortium of Humboldt geologists working on, you know, looking at the differences between, you know, uplift associated with the Cascadian subduction zone, you know, Cascadian event like we're discussing here versus the more regional localized faults, for instance, you know, King Salmon, Little Salmon Fault, north of here, the Mad River Fault Zone, and, you know, the McKinley Fault, Phil Fault, you know, wherein which up north, Crescent City is more impacted or more influenced by the Cascadian subduction zone. Are we starting to get a grasp on how the individual faults, particularly, let's just say, you know, the Mad River Fault System, which is more locally affecting us here in Arcata and how that may reflect on regional means sea level rise here specifically in Arcata?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that. It sounds like another panel discussion.
Sounds good.
It sounds like something that Lori Dingler would be able to answer because you, if you read in the paper, she's probably in the paper every week talking about earthquakes. So if someone just started to follow her and read it on a regular basis, they would begin to get an understanding of what's happening. And, and she figures if we have a large, whatever episode, whatever you want to call it, we will definitely have a tsunami in our area.
There's a lot of historical evidence up and down the Cascadia Zone from the last time the Cascadia Subduction moved the whole length, where it subsided, that there was forests that ended up, because the ground dropped, the saltwater came in, the trees died standing up. And all up and down the coast, geologists have mapped those areas. And we've actually seen on a field trip on the Eel River Delta, you can see the roots of some of the submerged trees in on Mad River Slough. And I don't know why it went down and didn't go up, but, you know, it has gone down in the past, you know, and there must have been a tsunami or something associated with it.
What a note to end on.
Yeah, co-seismics aside, it's good stuff.
It leaves us a lot to think about, which I think all of us want to go home and consolidate our notes and look at all of these links and, you know, digest. I, I do like to maybe wrap up. So just, just closing, if there's any final thoughts that our panelists would like to add or maybe just, you know, if, if we as decision makers take away one thing that you guys said tonight, you know, what do you think we should take away? And, and just your closing before we all head out of here.
I guess I'll start. I think in closing, you know, I think Arcata has already done such great work and we've been happy to be able to provide some of the funding to support that. And so it's really great to see you getting out ahead and proactively thinking about these. So that's kind of part A. Part B, I'll just say, you know, we do have to start addressing these and I do think we have to stop thinking about the coast as kind of a stationary area. It's going to be dynamic. We're going to have to be thinking about what are the right adaptation strategies to use over time and how do we connect that all to kind of making sure we're protecting a balance of all these different resources that we hold dear and which of course the Coastal Act requires us to protect. So making those kind of things fit up is, is a challenge for all of us. But, you know, we, we are excited to keep working with your staff on all this great work that's already kind of been going on. Thanks.
Thank you, Kelsey.
I guess I'll go and leave the final words for in the room. But yeah, I just, I want to thank you all for inviting me to be a part of this. As I said earlier, super encouraged at this conversation and the level of questions that you all are pondering and grappling with and bringing to the table, I think shows how much thought and care you're giving to this, which again is, is super encouraging. I'll just say from, from a national perspective, you're not alone. I think there are communities across the US on all coasts grappling with this challenge, maybe in slightly different ways and it presents a little differently based on local conditions and context. But if there's any consolation in that, I hope you know that you're not alone. And also like you're out in front of it. You're, you're having these conversations. You have a strategy, you know, that you're considering and, and that's huge. As much as, as our office and, you know, myself, our regional director Becky Smythe is also listening into the call, as much as we can continue to, to be a touch point and, and that that is useful and worthwhile, you know, we're happy to continue these conversations and supporting this work in, in any way that seems appropriate. And that's putting our heads together with the Coastal Commission. And Kelsey, this is in our first rodeo with, with her as well. And so, yeah, just as much as we can continue to, to provide products and services and support, please let us know.
Thank you, Gwen. And to our in-person panelists, any closing thoughts?
I would encourage you to take an active role in the regional sea level rise adaptation planning project. I think the, the city has done a lot already and you could be a really valuable participant in that. And what would work in Arcata will work for the rest of the bay or what would work in King Salmon may very well work in Arcata. Rather than divide, you know, that planning amongst three different LCP authorities, joining your forces with the Coastal Commission and coming up with a strategy that can work anywhere on the bay, I think we'd go a long ways to secure in future funding to be able to do projects, you know, to implement. And I guess lastly, the areas that we know are vulnerable to a meter of sea level rise, which is kind of what we're dealing with up front, we should, we need to protect, you know, what people have in those areas for as long as we can. But we really need to avoid putting any new things at risk in those areas. As I said before, sea level rise is not going to stop anytime soon. It's going to keep on going. So I think we need to reduce what's at risk and not put more new development in areas that are vulnerable.
I'm just going to say thank you for, for inviting me tonight. I'd be happy to come back in another 10 years and do this again. And we can talk about how right or wrong we were. I just want to kind of mirror what everybody else said and, and that's, you know, I think the city is definitely putting effort into this and you're asking the right questions and, and just continue doing that. I also want to put, put a pitch out for our, our local scientific community. We have a lot of brain trust locally, have for a long time, and we can add value to these large regional, state and national studies that, that come out. They bring a lot of good science, but as I hope, I just kind of skimmed on today, we have our own local issues that kind of add or detract from that information. So I think I'll just end it all right there.
Thank you for inviting us.
Okay. Well, thank you, everybody, and thank you, our public and council and commission for all the great questions and attending. And with that, we are adjourned. Thanks.